All right, I see that he's on now. There we go. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, April nineteenth City Council meeting to order. Can you please call the roll?
Alderman Santee?
Here.
Alderman Glad?
Here.
Alderman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderman Harding?
Here.
Alderman Mahavec?
Here.
Alderman Devine?
Here.
Alderwoman Miller?
Alderman Miller?
You hear me? Okay, you're good now. Thank you.
All right. If you could please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. I will call to order the public hearing for the proposed fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget. I'll go ahead and open it up for public input at this point. If you'd like to speak, if you could please unmute yourself. Once again, if you'd like to speak on behalf of the public hearing portion of the proposed fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget, this is your opportunity. Okay, I am looking for a motion in a second to close the public hearing portion. Alderman Santee?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing portion of the meeting as presented.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Glad?
Second.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a motion to adopt the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget. I'm looking for a motion in a second. Alderman Harding?
I make a motion to adopt the budget for twenty-twenty-one through twenty-two, twenty-two.
Wayne, before we do that, did we need a roll call for the last motion to close the public hearing?
Oh.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, I need a roll call, Chris, regarding the public hearing portion to close them, that portion of the public hearing, so.
Sure, no problem. Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavec?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller? Yes.
All right. Thank you, Brandy. At this point, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget. To make that motion was Ryan Harding, Alderman Harding, and then the second.
Second? Do we have a second?
Alderman Santee? Okay. Discussion on this? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavec?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller? Yes.
Thank you, Tricia. Next item on the agenda is public comment. At this time, you have the opportunity to make a public comment regarding items that are not on the agenda this evening. Every other item will, you'll have the opportunity to have, will have a discussion as that action item comes up. So at this time, I've asked that you keep it to three minutes and the first person can go ahead and unmute yourself and if you could, please state your name and address for public record.
Wayne, can I, I haven't registered for that, but can I?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so Jerry, Jerry Condon, forty-eight, twenty-three, Loyola Drive. Something, I forgot about this, and since I'm already at the meeting, it's something that I've talked to Wayne about, and I know that there's been discussion about the count, within the council, but, and I know a couple of years ago when I was on the council, I also had made mention of this, but I highly encourage the council members to consider having a restriction on the number of years that any alderman or woman can serve. So basically term limits. And I don't know what the magic number is. I know, I think twelve is a good number. I served sixteen. I think anything, I think that was too long to be quite honest. So I would really encourage twelve. And the reason I say that is because I think it really helps the community changes. I look at what's before me here tonight, and I've only been gone two years of the council, and so many things have changed, and that's great. We need new ideas. The community changes. And I would just highly encourage all of you to seriously consider term limits for the alderman position. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Jerry. And next person to speak on public comments? You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi all, this is Keith Varcalis, twenty-oh-seven Birch Lane in here in McHenry. At the last meeting, I had mentioned that I was going to send an invite to Mayor Jett. I have not done that as of yet, but I will be sending one out. Looking over the meeting minutes from the last meeting, I noticed that the discussion, or it wasn't in the meeting minutes, of Mayor Jett's response to one of the other neighbors here in the Oaks, McHenry. Also, in, missing from the meeting minutes was the end of the meeting when Andrew Glad had asked Mayor Jett to reconsider. That was also omitted from the meeting minutes. And I do not know if that is a normal procedure to leave stuff out, or if that was accidentally omitted from those minutes. I would like myself, along with other people, been told there was a process in regards to any business coming into McHenry. And I, along with other people, had told that, and I would like to believe that. I was asked on the street, obviously, I've been talking to many people, if I was aware that after the original continental conceptual plan was given to, or brought before the city council, and everyone was asked, the alder, aldermen and alderwomen were asked their thoughts on it shortly after that meeting. Again, I was told this, I did not hear it, the phone calls. But it was brought to my attention, I was asked if I knew that one of the elected officials received phone calls from a paid public official and a elected public official, and was told that they must vote yes for this proposal. I do know the two names that I was given that made this phone call to somebody. I do not want to give those names at this point, and I was wondering if those two individuals who made those phone calls would like to explain that to the rest of us. Thank you for the time, and I do appreciate that.
Thank you. Tricia and Monty, if we could look at those minutes and get those rectified and see what the issue is with those, that'd be great. Anyone else for public comment? Last opportunity for public comment?
Yep. Hi all, Christine Reiner, thirty-three oh four Almond Lane. I one-hundred percent Keat's comments with regard to the minutes, there seemed to be some items missing. In addition, you had accused me of using profanity and actually called out my name. I have never used profanity. You also indicated that you were going to send the members of the council examples of communication with profanity. However, I have checked with several members, and you did not, in fact, have anything either in writing or verbally with profanity. You owe me an apology. Next, I want to address your comment that we should be ashamed of the town hall and how Jeff Schaefer was treated. You are actually the one responsible for us having the town hall. Your lack of transparency, clarity, and inaccurate information provided by the city planner and staff required that we get answers somehow. So in short, you should be the one that is ashamed. You also made a catastrophic mistake as a politician, leader, and most importantly, mayor, when you declined to meet with your constituents, residents, and taxpayers. One of the residents of the Oaks stated that you told them, and I quote, "I do not represent the minority." What exactly does that mean? We would like clarification, please. Your behavior, demeanor, and actions since February first have severely affected your support and likely any future political aspirations you may have, and rightfully so. You have violated almost every one of McHenry's governing principles and code of ethics. You act as though you have no rights, or are not educated, or we are not educated enough to understand what's going on. This is not only our quality of life that's being affected, but the quality of life for all residents and businesses in the city of McHenry. You have no explanation or documentation pertinent to the city of McHenry, and I'm not talking about outdated nationwide studies of other cities. I support how two-hundred-and-eighty-eight apartments will benefit the city of McHenry. Businesses are leaving by the groves, and not because of a lack of population. Please explain the economic principle towards your thought process. Last, now that the election is over, maybe it's time for a new start. We would love to work with you, Mr. Mayor, and the city council. Hopefully, going forward, when discussing projects, we'll hear more of, this is what the residents in my ward want, or this is what my constituents are saying. Instead of, I feel, I like, or I want. We are a community, whether we like it or not. The mayor should be setting that example, and if he does not, it is the responsibility, actually, the responsibility defaults to the city council, which is you aldermen and alderwomen, to protect us, speak on our behalf, and most importantly, represent us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on behalf of public comment?
Hello?
Yes, Sam, go ahead.
Hi, how are you? I just want to say that I'm really not, not happy with sitting in on the meetings and hearing that we're crazy people. We're not crazy people. We're just really concerned about our property values, the, the safety of our neighborhood. I mean, you want to put, you know, a hundred and twelve studio apartments and about the same amount of one-bedroom apartments right in our backyard, literally in my backyard. And that concerns us. I have a lot of safety concerns. Maybe the police chief can kind of log in and see if he has any safety concerns. Maybe he can reassure us this is safe, but instead of, you know, going on social media and cheerleading for this project, like you know you like to do, Mr. Mayor, that makes people upset. We don't understand the process. We're very new to all this city council meetings and how we get things done. So we, we call you to depend on you, and you go on your social media, you shame us. You actually said we should be ashamed of ourselves for having this town hall meeting. I mean, it's not like Mr. McClatchkey or, or Mr. Schaefer, some feeble-minded fools that we could just take advantage of. They answered our questions. They both said, they agree that our property values will go down. You never addressed that. You talk about everything else. You, you, you never address our property values. Two aldermen, the former aldermen and the new aldermen, both agree that our values are gonna go down. How could this not? I mean, how can anybody be for this? There's nobody that I've talked to, and I've knocked on every door here that's for this. And you look down and you look away, and I would just like our concerns to be validated. I would like to hear from, from the police chief, maybe tell us this is gonna be safe. How are you gonna, how are you gonna police this in between a shopping mall and a, it just doesn't belong here. It just doesn't belong here. Both of the aldermen agreed, and we don't like the accusations of being called crazy, and that's exactly what you called us. Nobody swore you. Nobody's done anything but tried to follow what we understand to be as the process. We're trying to just get our voice heard. How about putting this on the agenda and letting us ask real questions that can be answered, instead of, you know, if you don't want to meet with us? That's all I have to say. I just, like I said, I just very concerned. Everybody agrees the property values will go down. How can any alderman, how can anybody vote for that, to do that to us? That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time. And again, we are not crazy. I mean, our apartment buildings, complexes like this, ever a good idea for a town like McHenry? In ten years, is anybody gonna be, oh, I'm glad we got these apartment complexes? I don't think so. I think we should think about it. And that's, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. For the record, I never called any, anyone crazy, so. All right, anyone else for public comment? I see none. Moving on to consent agenda, item seven A through seven K. Is there any items that council would like to pull for separate consideration? Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I'd like to pull C.
Okay. Any other council members?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Andy, was that C you said?
Yes.
Sorry.
Any others? All right. At this time, I'm looking for a motion in a second for item seven A, B, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K. I don't know why I didn't say all between. Seven A, B, and then D through K. Looking for a motion in a second. Alderman Santee?
I'll make a motion to approve consent to gen items A and B, and then D through K as presented.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Devine?
I will second that.
Thank you. Discussion on these items? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller? Alderman Mahavec?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Thank you. Item seven C was pulled by Alderman Glad. As a pass and ordinance amending Title VII Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter Two, General Regulations, Second, Section seven dash two dash five. Operation of non-highway motor vehicles on the city street by amending Section E, time adding this month of April. I will go ahead and open it up for discussion. Alderman Glad, go ahead.
Yeah, basically, again, I do not think that we should be opening up for these vehicles that early in the season. According to what the forecast was, actually, we should be looking at snow tonight. Forecasts have changed. However, the potential of heavier snows in April are there, and I just don't feel that that we should be changing the ordinance. You know, if, if next year, March becomes a nice month, is are we gonna be pushing for March instead of April? And another question I have for the attorney is, is if this passes tonight, when does it go into effect?
Brandon, ready, go on.
I actually don't have the answer to that. I think it was addressed in the ordinance, though.
I'm sorry?
It should have been addressed in the ordinance. Derek, do you, I see you're looking for it, so. Our chief, do you have anything?
Yeah, yeah. It, it would take effect today, or as soon as council, if they passed it, it would take effect today. So there would be, in theory, if they actually were to apply and get their permit between the twentieth and the thirtieth of this month, there would be some days this month that they would be able to operate.
I know, I know, number one, it couldn't happen today because it has to be published first. But I just wondered, there was a waiting period. I always thought there was like a thirty or sixty-day waiting period on an ordinance before it goes into effect. I guess it's kind of mute because actually, by the time they get their permits and everything else, this month's just about gone this year. And it's a shame that again, that we're reopening this, you know, we've had one year with it, and here we are changing it already. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Alderman Santee?
No, just a real quick question for Chief Burke. Has there been any issues the last, the first year of this ordinance?
No, none documented. Nothing that we have in our police reports for calls for service.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah, chief, just so that you know, I've had several residents in the city, not just in my ward, that have mentioned the fact that last year in early, or maybe it was late November, early December, that there were a couple of vehicles that were running up and down the streets over in Park Ridge Estates, and that there've been a couple vehicles already out on the streets this year. So just food for thought, again, so that the officers hopefully will be enforcing at least the dates, whatever the just council votes on tonight.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I'm looking for a motion to approve seven C as presented. Alderman Harding?
I make a motion to pass C as, as presented.
Thank you. Second? Alderwoman Miller? Thank you. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller? Yes. Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavec?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
All right, thank you, council. First action item is eight A, is a discussion to approve a transfer of a Class A liquor license from Kelsey Three DBA Metalwood Grill Incorporated to McHenry Country Club located at eight-twenty North John Street. This is, I contacted each council member regarding this, so we're bringing it before you tonight. If you have any questions, this is your opportunity for discussion. Opening up for public input. Is there anyone from the public that I'd like to make a public comment regarding this item? Looking for a motion in a second to approve eight A as presented. Alderman Santee?
I'll make the motion as presented for, for eight A, a motion to approve the transfer of liquor license as presented for Metalwood Grill to the McHenry Country Club located at eight-twenty North John Street.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Miller? Thank you. Discussion by council? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller? Yes. Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavec?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is discussion subject to the approval of agenda item eight A, motion to approve a video gaming license for five video gaming terminals to McHenry Country Club located at eight-twenty North John Street. Deputy City Clerk, Monty Johnson, do you have anything on this? If not, it's not really, there you go.
I'm sorry, what do you want to know?
No, you're good. I didn't know if you were gonna present it. There's really nothing to present.
But you, you know, they just want, there, there's video games there now, and they, and they just want to take it over as it is now. They don't want anything extra special.
Okay. Open it up for discussion by council for seven B. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I haven't been in there, sort of say, put these machines in, but are they subject to all the ordinances that are in place at this time?
Yeah, I can, I can answer that one, Andy. So if you, if you go in to the left as you walk into the main entrance, there's the seating area, and straight ahead's the banquet facility. And to the left, they have that smaller room before you get into the bar area. Yeah. That's, that's where the video gaming machines are. And I just execute, they did, I went out there and they executed a video gaming development agreement when the machines first went in. I will revisit them based on the, based on approval tonight. And, and have that same discussion and make sure that they're aware of what that agreement has in it and that they're compliant with that agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
All right, any, Alderman Santee, go ahead.
I'm, I'm looking through the, the two applications, so Sven Overland is, is the corporation signed off on this, and any local agent is Jeffrey Thorne, that's for the gaming license, or is that for the alcohol license, liquor license?
Well, they don't really have agents for, for, for video gaming, and the video gaming falls under liquor when it comes to who organizes it. So, so that manager is the liquor agent, and they, I guess, you know, by default, they would be in charge of video gaming.
Okay, that's, all right, I wanted to make sure that, that the, the names were basically transferable from the liquor to the video gaming. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments regarding this item? Open up for public input. Is there one, anyone from the public that'd like to make a public comment regarding this item? I'm looking for a motion in second to approve eight B as presented. Alderman Santee?
I'll make the motion for eight B as presented.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Harding?
I'll make a second on that.
Thank you. Discussion by council? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavec?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller? That was a yes, Tricia. Okay, thanks. Sorry.
You're really quiet.
We, we gotta bump up her audio. Alderman Miller.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is eight C, is discussion to approve an ordinance granting approval of a final plat of McHenry Plaza re-subdivision, and a motion to approve an ordinance granting approval of a use variation on Lot One, a conditional use permit on Lot Three, and zoning variations for the final plat of McHenry Plaza re-subdivision. Director Polarecki, want to go ahead and present this?
Thank you, Mayor. As council is aware, the former, I can say former now, Stock and Field location has officially closed its doors. We have been working with Pearl Street Commercial LLC on redevelopment of this property to include a couple of outlet, a couple of outlets, one being a potential restaurant end user. The petitioner actually requested to give a brief presentation to the council tonight. They, they did the same at the planning and zoning. So I'm gonna go ahead and pass this off to Mr. Stephen Schwartz, who's online with us tonight. And he would like to give you a brief presentation of what the plan is for this Stock and Field location, as well as the new outlets. So, Monty, if you could allow Steve to share his screen.
He's ready to go.
Steve, you there?
I am. I also think Joe Gottermullers here, our team, and Ed Ratan, my architect. I, I'm not sure, but I think Joseph Vravano is also our engineer of HR Green, but I haven't been able to confirm if he's the J on the second page, or if he's, he's joining us or not. But regardless, we certainly can proceed with our presentation. So we appreciate that.
Yep, go ahead, Steve, and then we'll, we'll go ahead and reconvene afterwards.
Okay. Joe, do you want to say anything first, or you want me to?
I, I think you should go right ahead with the presentation. If they have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Okay. Give me a second here, folks. I'm gonna pull up my screen here, hopefully. We'll be able to. Can you see that currently?
You can see her, there you.
Okay. There's our screen. So I just mentioned our team. Okay, there's our screen. So I just mentioned our team, um, Joe Godamola, Ed Ratan, Ratan Architects, and Joseph Verrano of, of HR Green. The site itself is, Ross alluded to, was, is the former Stock and Field, uh, previously Big R and, and prior to that, the former Target. It's the southeast corner of, uh, Richmond Road or Route thirty-one and McCollum Lake Road, um, shopping center there. I have an altus survey just to show you a quick point. It previously had a subdivision done in twenty nineteen uh, by Eliana Realty that I believe the city council approved. Lot one situated here and lot two, which was subdivided and approved. Um, the reason that we're seeking a re-subdivision this evening, uh, twofold. One, that this particular lot, one that, or lot two that was subdivided was not deep enough or shallow to allow, uh, multiple uses rather than a longer, thinner, uh, strip retail building that we believe might have been more difficult to tenant and, uh, and to occupy. So part of our request this evening is a plat of re-subdivision, final plat of re-subdivision for three lots. Uh, the existing, uh, uh, building, uh, primary parking field, a lot two, uh, which we'll get into that shows the proposed Aspen Dental and Well Now, we have a lot of intents for, and the conditional use for a drive-through for, uh, the potential, uh, development standalone use on lot three. As mentioned, the closed Stock and Field. My slides, make it a little easier. Um, the proposed self-storage conversion, Class A self-storage conversion for this facility, um, we, you'll see in the elevations, we propose a, a load and go, uh, in and out right here, smaller vehicles, transit van. We also have a, included a drive-through ingress as part of our design to come into the building and exit out on McCollum Lake Road. It's one of the variations we're also seeking this evening as part of our approvals, and we also have the loading bot dock back in the back of the building that's for larger vehicles, trucks moving, trucks, um, that could certainly deliver goods in household, uh, folks who are moving. Uh, the proposed site, as I mentioned, additional two lots in the subdivision, uh, the proposed redevelopment for Aspen Dental and Well Now, they're sister companies, um, providing full services for media care and all the dental services, uh, you could think of. And again, the proposed restaurant, um, as I said, these have been designed to not only circulate well, to have proper visibility, uh, enhance landscaping, not only for the outlets, uh, as well as, uh, for us to bring the, the, uh, overall site into compliance with the subdivision ordinance. We've significantly increased landscaping, oops, didn't mean to do that, throughout the site. That'll move in a second. Uh, landscaping on McCollum Lake Road, additional landscaping for the residential, uh, multifamily to the east there. I also, as a side note, did the Popeyes a little over a year ago and sort of brought my attention to the shopping center and, and, and here we are today. Just another detailed plan, detailed landscaping that serves the Aspen Dental Well Now site. Uh, similarly, when this next outlet gets developed, it would have a similar landscape detail and plan to it, uh, in final form. Uh, landscaping plan, as I said, is enhanced throughout the entire parking field. Uh, we're also going to be doing, uh, overlays and asphalt improvements as well to bring it into grade. It's obviously degraded over time and has not been maintained, uh, probably to extent it should have by the various retailers or operators in the past. Another, uh, viewpoint, our signage plan, we would use existing pylon for our, uh, our third-party manager, uh, top REIT we've used in many of our facilities, uh, primarily three different, uh, national REITs, uh, for management. One is Life Storage, one is Cube Smart, and one is also, uh, extra space, and we have not made that final determination, but they'll be part and parcel of our entire operations, first-class operations for our climate-controlled Class A drive-through facility. Um, as part of the design, uh, we have or show a three-tenant monument sign that would straddle the two lines here. Um, we know that would come back on a separate petition or presentation and permitting to city council. Um, there've been discussions perhaps of maybe going with a smaller sign standalone for this site, but right now this is meant to placeholder and show, uh, what we envision for the use and signage for these lots as well as the reuse of the existing, uh, uh, pylon and, and LED out there. There's the four elevations to our building. Uh, this is the, uh, south elevation, or I'm sorry, the west elevation, um, of the former Stock and Field. We have the, uh, loading dock or would be the south elevation. We have the north of McCollum Lake Road, so you have the loading go as I was describing, the, uh, display doors and sales office over here, and we would have the, uh, drive-through component in front, which is striped and protected. Uh, it's also inset or set in in the plan. You'll see that when I go to the next slide. Um, some display doors up above like U-Haul has as well as down here, and then an exit out on McCollum Road, which is part of our request as well this evening, which was unanimously supported by the, uh, recommendation by planning and zoning. We also had separate discussions both with Ross, Cody, uh, Public Works and Engineering regarding, uh, compliance and proper design, and I think we have, uh, their support as well for our variation. This is sort of the interior or the, the, uh, west elevation of the building that I was describing. Here's our drive-through, so our ingress into the building in this little section here is already set into the, off the service road here, ingress would come in from a keypad that customers would get with their leasing of units, come through, load and unload, and exit out on McCollum Lake Road. We have the quicker load and go for residential and smaller vehicles. And then again, we have the larger loading dock back here for larger, uh, moving trucks and whatnot. One of the reasons for these three different points of access, not only distribute customers, but sort of rules of thumb and, and good design for self-storage, you always want a point of access no more than a hundred and fifty feet away from, uh, loading points if possible for your customers. Larger units are usually placed closer to those, uh, uh, loading points and smaller units further away. So there's, you know, well-thought-out design and the plans to how we do this. Um, the Aspen Dental Well Now plan and configuration, seven thousand square foot building, first-class building in terms of brick and stone and pilasters and, and signage bands and, uh, you know, something that would be, I'm sure, emulated or copied as part of the design for the second outlet. Again, four-sided brick and stone component along with the landscaping, heavy landscaping, so we, we're very proud of that. A little reference to my projects, I've been doing, uh, retail and, and self-storage retail development for over twenty-five years, uh, self-storage for a little over twelve years, and, uh, I've done a number of projects throughout the marketplace. Most of my projects, if I can, I incorporate a drive-through component, an attribute that we think is very well-received in the marketplace when it rains, sleet, or snows. Folks, uh, can come into that facility at any time, uh, during operating hours and, uh, makes it a very attractive, uh, well-received component of our site. We just completed a little over a year ago, the old lumberyard at two oh one Virginia Road in Crystal Lake. The many you have either maybe seen or if you've traveled up and down the road, first-class drive-through, another loading component. I have a site that managed by Life Storage in Lake Zurich, drive-through component of the building, and other loading back as well. An office building conversion, one out in Maryville that we were doing, and a past project in Lyles. So with the drive-through component, very proud of the, the facilities that we build and our operations as well. And as I said, I've done, uh, many, many years of retail development, big and small. So I know not only in terms of the difficulties of filling larger boxes, but the ability to bring quality standalone outlets, development and part of our development with the storage allows the deeper and, uh, what we think is exciting outlets because of the, the lower or lesser requirements for parking for the storage versus general retail. And I have some other viewpoints and things that we can certainly go through to address questions, so.
Thanks, Steve, appreciate it. Um, is there anyone from your team that would like to speak? Next, Joe?
I, I may just, just to, uh, reiterate that we're here to answer questions if there's any particular questions. I, I know in the past that sometimes there's questions about what hardships are and things like that, and, and we'd be more than prepared to answer those, but in the meantime, I think we hand it back to Ross and see what questions the board has.
All right, so just, just real quick, the, um, we, you know, Cody and I, uh, worked with Steve and his team quite extensively through this project. Uh, one of the things we wanted to concentrate on was how do we improve this massive parking lot that we have out here that's just kind of blight, right? I mean, it's, it's, so we, we did concentrate on landscaping. Steve, I know you don't like us for that. We asked you to add quite a few trees. Uh, we also encouraged the, uh, residential screening trip, strip on the east side, uh, to help screen, uh, those multifamily units from the, from the, the building currently. Um, and as you can see in these, these landscape photos, uh, some mature trees, some islands in the parking lot, which currently do not exist. Um, just overall, looking to add a lot more green space to the property. Um, Steve and his team were great. Uh, they, they, they go, they went ahead and they, you know, they, they didn't have any issues with it. So, um, I guess with that being said, um, council, you know, we're here to ask any question, answer any questions from a staff standpoint or, or from the developer's standpoint. So Mayor, I'll hand it back over to you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Ross. Uh, I'll open it up for discussion by council. Because this is on a shared screen, I can't see everybody, so, uh.
Steve, can you just? If you want, I can close the screen or, or let Ross pull it back up or?
Yeah, we can, Steve, we can pull it back up if, if you want to stop sharing.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, uh, we'll go ahead and open up for discussion by council. Uh, Alderman Harding?
Uh, just a couple of simple questions. Can you explain this drive-through? Like, is, is it only for one car? Is it for multiple cars? Is it one way in, one way out? That's what it looks like? Um, and then like, I'm thinking about people with diesel trucks or regular gas trucks and the ventilation that is going to have to take place in that building. Can you kind of explain how that goes down with this, with this drive-through?
Uh, absolutely. In terms of the drive-through into the building, the, the width of that drive-through is designed purposely as all of our drive-throughs are, it's twenty-four or twenty-five feet in width. So it allows vehicles with striping to pull over to one side to load and unload other cars as they come in to go or trucks to go past, like, again, in terms of the size and, uh, types of vehicles that would come in. Uh, larger moving vehicles, diesel would be presumably off the back loading dock, uh, not through the drive-through. Um, part of our design always is to be compliant with code, and I was talking to my architect, Ed Ratan, who's online as well, but we always have CO2, uh, sensors and design as part of our design. So there's always public safety and fire protection, so this is not something new, but it will be compliant with your code. Um, what we do oftentimes is, is the ceiling deck in there is, is principally going to stay, but where the drive-through is, we would have presumably some type of, uh, um, metal, uh, components carrying up that, that area or separating, dividing the, the units from the drive-through. And so it's safe, effective, and, you know, does everything it needs to do from public safety and fire and protection. So hopefully that answered you.
Yeah.
Ryan, you got anything else?
I'm good, thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman Schaefer?
Um, the, uh, the vehicles that are going to be using McCollum Lake Road, they will not be able to head east, correct?
Though they could actually head east or west, they, they would be able to, to go east or west. Egress out.
Has Cody or Ross or anybody talked to you about the, what you can, what size vehicles are allowed on that road and also onto Riverside Drive?
I think Alderman Schaefer, you're looking at that entrance on the, on the, would be the nor, north side of the building, that your larger trucks are actually going to be using the, the loading dock area.
I, I don't care which dock they use, it's where they go once they use the dock or where they come from.
Right, but we don't restrict the rear access, and those were semis doing deliveries before, so I don't know how we would restrict.
Well, we, we have an issue right now on Riverside Drive where trucks that are not supposed to be on there use that. So how will this not have those trucks turning east and going down Riverside Drive or coming in off of Riverside Drive?
Well, I would imagine that as a delivery driver, you, you, you're supposed to know that. I mean, it's, it's no different than across the street for the ones that delivered to the K-Marts or the, or the Goodwill or, or whatnot.
Okay, well, again, talk to the residents on Riverside Drive or have somebody videotape the, the trucks that go down Riverside Drive or that go down Washington Street or McCollum Lake Road, and you'll know what I'm talking about. That's all I'm asking is if they know that, because if you have certain trucks, and it's not just semis, uh, that are not allowed on that road, I don't think, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but, uh, some moving veh, some moving trucks also over a certain weight aren't supposed to be on that section of Riverside Drive, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Uh, Chief, you'd have to chime in on this one. Um, I'm not sure what is restricted on those roads.
I'm taking a look at the city ordinance right now. If there is a restriction, it would be marked, it would be properly marked. I know Riverside Drive is marked, um, on what classification road it is, and we regularly, our truck enforcement officers regularly patrol that roadway to enforce, so unless you're going to that area for a delivery, um, you can't use that as a pass-through, and we do enforce that. Um, so, um, but I'm just trying to see here if McCollum Lake Road is listed.
So you just mentioned something, unless you're using it for a delivery. So anybody using it for a delivery would have allowed access?
Yeah, general, generally, if you, even if you're going into a subdivision, because you're, you have to drop off a load of material because you're developing a driveway or something like that, you, generally, you wouldn't be able to drive certain weighted vehicles on that subdivision road, but there are exceptions to the rules as long as you make notification because you're actually going to an address on that road to deliver product.
So what if I'm going to the storage facility?
I'm going to let Troy jump in. And we also, we also, we have overweight permits for certain, certain things as well, so.
Chief, I was just going to chime in. I, I just went to the street view and it looks like the sign showing the load posting shows twenty-six thousand pound load posting.
Okay.
Just a point of clear, I'm just asking, because that section, Troy of McCollum Lake Road that goes between thirty-one and Riverside Drive is already in dire need of repair. So the more trucks that you add to it with this type of facility is, is, I'm just trying to think about that for the use, so.
So I had. No, I, I wouldn't disagree with that. Twenty-six thousand pounds probably allows some box trucks and obviously would not allow slow sides.
Any other questions, comments by council? Alderman Glenn?
And the only thing I'm getting at is, is number one, none of these trucks are basically owned by the facility. These are visiting trucks. Um, I would actually feel that there would probably be fewer larger trucks actually going in and out of this than, uh, what, what there was when Target was there. So I don't see it being any kind of an issue other than the fact to make sure we enforce, uh, any kind of, uh, vehicles and trucks, uh, going through any of our streets that we've limited our weight on. So I'll leave it at that. And other than that, uh, I'm not crazy about the idea of, uh, losing the retail space for these type of facilities, but again, um, I don't think brick and mortar is gone for good, but I, I think, uh, as far as the big boxes coming back in, yeah. Uh, these large buildings, uh, it's difficult as far as what they could be used for and, uh, what could be productive on.
Thank you. Alderman Santi?
Do you, uh, Steve, Joe, whomever, uh, does self-storage rent vehicles or trailers?
Um, some facilities do, but I don't believe this one's planning on having a, you have U-Haul literally right across the street. So it's, it's not going to be a U-Haul operation. They're not going to let you have one that close to another one. But there have been other facilities where we've used them. There, there might be a vehicle or two, but it wouldn't be an operation like a U-Haul operation.
Yeah, and, and to follow up, what Joe just said, that, that's not our intention, nor are we asking for that, nor do we expect that. Uh, we mentioned, uh, planning and zoning, this is a different center or different operations. It's with the approvals of our property owners, everybody together, the intent is to, to not have that up front and center. The intent is to, to not have that front and center. So that's, that's not what we're asking for, nor planning for, no propane. None of the operations that you see across the street.
Okay, well, it just, it just brings up a second question then. From other facilities and other locations in the Chicagoland market. Will you, I assume it's going to happen from time to time, but will, will there be storage of vehicles on your parking lot or trailers from time to time where there might be an excessive amount at a, you know, location, a given, you know, 10 or 20 miles away that you need to hold them somewhere else?
There, there's no outdoor storage for parking or vehicles in this, in this request, nor in this design, nor there, will, will there be? There's no, that's not part of this first-class facility that we're converting, so.
Great. And it's just one more quick item on lot three, which is soon to be a restaurant. You guys are going to be making some adjustments to the parking area. Are you going to touch any of the parking lot area around lot three, lot three at this time, or are you just going to let, let that sit as, as is until you have a confirmed agreement with, with a company?
I, I would say it would probably sit until we have an agreement. I mean, we'd certainly make sure it's maintained in, in a quality condition, but we wouldn't want to overlay and do the whole nine yards, knowing that it's going to hopefully be redeveloped in, in, in short order, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments by council? Alderman Schaefer?
On the outlets, how you think that's going to happen in 2021?
The Aspen dental, well, yes.
No, to the restaurant?
The, the restaurant, we don't have a, a user at this point. We've had some dialogue conversations, but obviously in terms of getting this all approved and moving it forward, first step was, we do have a letter of intent and a plan for Aspen dental well now. And with the investment that we're doing, not only for the conversion of the, of the former stock and field, the improvements of the parking asphalt and landscaping coupled with the, the, the Aspen dental well now. Retail, we gets retail, so we're confident that that's going to generate interest and, and hopefully another user soon thereafter. But we certainly expect that the first part of that component or lot two to be developed in 2021 along with our, our building.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman Miller?
I, I just have one, and I didn't see it in the notes, or I missed it. You have a few spaces that are larger than others on your indoor storage. Are you allowing any indoor vehicle storage?
No, that's not part of our plan.
Okay, so no cars, motorcycles, alternative vehicles can be stored inside your big building?
I, I don't know in terms of motorcycles or certain things that might be allowed, but our intention is not to have store vehicles inside.
So no gasoline or oil or?
No, no.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments by council? Alderman Divine?
Thank you, mayor. I just had a question for Stephen. You, in that you develop these and other communities, how many have you developed that are directly across the street from a, a large storage facility like the U-Haul that's already present there?
Several, either across the street or down, down, down the road. The one in Lisle was directly across from public storage. I have one in Indiana, Maryville, Indiana, that's three lots down from public storage and, and another U-Haul and some other facilities. So, you know, it's like retail, we gets retail or competes. You know, there are certain factors in terms of density, apartments and, and, you know, supply and demand that, that dictates, you know, again, my, my type of facility of what we do in terms of Class A climate-controlled drive-through, it's a different offering, different attribute, something that we believe works very well, you know, in this environment and elsewhere. So it will compete well and do well, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions, comments by council? Moving to public input, is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? If so, please unmute yourself. Keith?
Yes, mayor. My question, I know we've had discussions about other things. And one of the items that always comes up is the financial benefit to the city of McHenry. A storage facility versus retail, what type of benefit financially does the city of McHenry get from that? I don't know if that's a question for city council or from Stephen and his company, but how will McHenry benefit financially?
Is that, I don't know if anybody from the city is going to answer that.
I, I, I can go ahead and I'll tell you that obviously, you know, it's not, as Alderman Glab alluded to, it's, it's definitely not something that we receive the most amount of revenue for. However, we know that big box retail is gone and we're, we struggle with, with many of these big box and empty big box stores. And to be able to fill a store at this point in time with a use and to gain the outlets that we're gaining, you know, we're hoping that what this does is it, is it exemplifies or, or gets that entire storefront a little bit more exposure to where we can start getting some of those smaller retails into those smaller retail spaces. But from a revenue standpoint, we, we do receive, Derek, do you know this offhand? It's a service, service, yeah, I'm not exactly sure what it is, service related to retail, but it's, it's definitely not as, as much revenue as a big box store would give us.
So would we be better off looking at trying to divide it up and get smaller retailers in there where McHenry could benefit from it versus Stock and Field being gone and right away a storage unit coming in? You know, would it be the, to the city's benefit to wait on opening something up like this? And, and Steve and I have nothing against a storage facility going in there, but I know I'm just looking at the financial side of it for the city.
And Keith, if I could answer perhaps that question for you as best I can, in terms of the, the close K-Mart across the street, the number of retail spaces over there similarly situated, as well as this particular center, this has, not including the 95,000 square feet that's now dark. There's over, I think, 60,000 available square feet in midsize and other shaped, you know, boxes there that are available immediately for tenancy and lease-up. So the standpoint of trying to take the bigger box and divide it and the cost of, of doing that, generating additional interest of retailers who principally are, are down in the, in a different trade area to the north or down a 120, trying to replicate and, and bring them to that location is a difficult endeavor, and we believe not only by the benefit of the outlets that we're creating, which, you know, retailers want to be front and center by being able to, to make the investment that we're doing for the, the conversion. It will spur another interest and desire and focus for the, our particular center, and we beneficial, you know, to the city of McHenry and to this corridor.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. And Keith, I think all of us, council members, staff, and I, we all agree. I mean, it's not something that we're, we weren't out there lobbying for a storage facility, but, you know, with all due respect, Steve has done a great job, not only Popeyes, but very good developer. We know that he won't cut corners and, and hopefully it'll brighten up that corner with a good restaurant, another anchor, and then hopefully we fill up that other space, the other spaces like Ross was saying. So hopefully at the end of the day, this can really bring back that center that is ultimately near empty. So.
Thank you, bear.
Any other questions, comments by the public?
Yes, actually, this is Kristy Reinhardt. I have a question. Do you guys, um, because I'm all, we're all new to this. Do you guys offer any incentives for maybe smaller businesses to go in those spaces? Or is that just up to like the landlords?
Doug, you want to go ahead and?
We do, we do offer incentives. We offered an, an incentive to Big R when they went in this space. So we, we do offer a lot of businesses and incentives throughout town. So just depends on the situation, depends on the business, the location, so, you know. Yes, we do.
We also do grants, we also do facade grants, we do revolving loans and so forth for, for small businesses as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments by the public regarding this item?
Sheila Thomas, 2021 Hazelwood Drive. I think personally, this is a great proposal. I think those buildings have been empty for so long. I know Stock and Field and Big R was just sort of rotating. I think putting two businesses more on Richmond Road is going to be great. I'm glad to see something's finally going in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Any other comments, questions by the public? All right, before we go for a vote, Steve, would you like to say anything else?
I appreciate the, the city council's consideration, and we're excited to bring another quality development in the outlets front and center. And again, I think that what we're doing is going to renew the focus now on this particular site and corridor, but the site across the street. And, you know, sets the standards in terms of landscaping and asphalt, all the improvements that have been needed to, you know, to generate interest and, and create a, a high-quality project, so. And serve a need as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Alderman Sandy?
Yeah, real quick, I was just looking at this, the well now urgent care, that, is that, is that a 24/7 facility?
It's not 24/7, seven days a week. I believe it's eight to eight, typically during the, the, each and every day through Sunday, Monday, Monday through Sunday.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Alderman Glab, go ahead.
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to mention is, is I'm hoping that this development helps the rest of this shopping strip bring in smaller businesses, you know. When we've looked at bringing in business, yes, we, we love the retail tax dollars that we garnish from it, but also we've got to look at the fact that one of our commitments at the city should be, and it is, is the fact that we're not just looking at the tax dollars, but also the services that we try to give our citizens and residents of the city of McHenry as far as places to shop. I can remember, if you went back to the seventies, when my, my aunt lived out West Shore Beach and she was just tickled pink that K-Mart was moving to Crystal Lake. And needless to say, even more ecstatic when it came to McHenry, because there weren't that many places to shop and you know, people complained about the empty buildings a lot, and we hear that. But I think they also kind of miss the fact that the smaller shops are gone, and, and I think it's the idea that they have fewer places to select to go to, and the more that projects like this hopefully will spur those small businesses coming back into those buildings.
Agreed. Thank you. All right, at this time, ask for a motion in a second to approve 8C as presented. Is a motion to approve an ordinance granting approval of a final plat of McHenry Plaza resubdivision and a motion to approve an ordinance granting approval of a use variation on lot one, a conditional use permit on lot three, zoning variations for a, the final plat of McHenry Plaza's resubdivision. I am looking for a motion in a second.
Mayor Jett, can I interrupt one quick second? Do you also need to add the zoning variation to allow the third egress on McCollum Lake Road set forth in the beginning of the agenda? I think that it's, it may be missing. It's part of the agenda's item summary, but it may not be part of the vote of consideration, so might need to be a separate addition.
We just, we can go ahead and just add that to the motion.
Yeah, I think that was inadvertently missed, or it probably falling under and zoning variations within S, so. What's that?
Where's the third egress at? Is it on the map?
It, it is. It's the one that you were asking about, when it comes out of the building. So they have the, the two exits with an in across from the K-Mart exit. Then if you move to the east, you have a second new access, or actually it's a zoning and exit. And then you have the rear. So it's the addition of the center curb cut on McCollum Lake Road.
I'm guessing by reading this, it's in the variations of the?
Right, so let me just go ahead and read real quick. A final plat of McHenry Plaza resubdivision, a use variance to allow a mini warehouse on lot one. Conditional use permit on lot three to allow a future drive-through establishment, a zoning variation to allow a minimum lot width of 187 feet on outlet three and 163 feet on outlet two, and leave the required 200 feet adjacent to an arterial road. A zoning variation to allow a third egress on McCollum Lake Road on lot one of the final plat of McHenry Plaza resubdivision.
Thank you, Ross. So I'm going to ask for a motion in a second, including the third egress to be approved on the variation. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make that motion as just read by Ross.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Sandy?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion by council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Sandy?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Mahovic?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Steve, I know this was a lot of work to put it in, to get this project going, but I appreciate all the effort and continued financial effort that you're putting into the city of McHenry. So thank you very much. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Alderman. Thank you all.
All right, item 8D is discussion to approve an ordinance to dissolve the Economic Development Commission and delete chapter two in its entirety from the McHenry municipal code. Doug, do you want to go ahead and talk about this a little bit?
Sure, mayor. Thank you. So the purpose of this item is to really dissolve the Economic Development Commission as it is right now, which is a nine-member commission and creation of a community navigator panel. In the community navigator panel, it really is a more independent set of individual subject matter experts that we're going to use the same people that are on the commission as subject matter experts of kind of their field. What they specialize in such as real estate, construction, manufacturing, business, banking, stuff like that, entrepreneurship. We're having a tough time with the commission as it is in its current form. We're not, it's not being, it's, 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 it's not productive. And we're, we're trying to come up with a different method of pursuing the, using the same members but being more productive. So we're, we're coming up with this community navigator panel. When, when somebody comes in and they need assistance, we call upon such, such a member and we want to add members to this community navigator panel. The, the only difference is we, we, we wouldn't meet on a regular basis. The, we, we've been having the Economic Development Commission meetings, but we've been having problems, you know, with somewhat with attendance, somewhat with productivity. And we just felt that this was a better way to, to do things. I had a discussion with Mayor Jett and the chairperson of the Economic Development Commission, and we just felt that pursuing a different method of doing things was a better way to go. So we, we, we came up with this method of doing things. So that's, that's kind of what we're proposing at this time.
Thanks, Doug. Yeah, I echo that. I mean, we, we've, we definitely had our challenges, especially during COVID, but the productivity was definitely difficult. And I hope this would actually help out new people coming into town, other business owners helping them out, giving them some guidance. But I think this is a, a better route and obviously, meetings are tough for a lot of people, so getting a full quorum was, was difficult as well. So go ahead and open up for discussion by council. Any questions, comments? Alderman, Alderman Glab?
Yeah, just a question. These are not paid positions, correct?
Correct.
Correct, yeah. And so are we expecting?
Correct, yeah. And so, uh, are we expecting the businesses then to donate their time also for this new system?
Yes, and.
Yes.
Several of them.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry, Doug.
Yeah, I, I think to some extent, uh, you rely on the strengths that are out there for different situations and the different people rather than collectively, uh, just trying to put it all together. So I, I, I don't know, it's, it's worth a try, I guess. The Economic Development Commission has been around for a long time in McHenry and, uh, the county. And, uh, and maybe this is something that might work and spark things a little bit better.
And we'll give you updates, um, as things happen as well over the next six months. See how things go. Any other questions, comments by council? See none, uh, open up for public input. Is there one, anyone from the public that'd like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none, I'm looking for a motion to approve eight D as presented. Alderman Harding?
I make a motion for eight D as presented.
Thank you. Alderman Santee for a second?
Yes, Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Uh, discussion by council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahovic?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Uh, next item on the agenda is a discussion item. Uh, nine A is discussion regarding two thousand and twenty one honorary street sign applications. Uh, Director Strange, you want to go ahead and present this and start it out?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So staff is seeking direction from city council regarding approval of honorary street signs for twenty twenty one calendar year. We considered honorary street signs at the March twenty second Public Works Committee meeting. And, uh, the conversation, normally we would bring forward a recommendation to council of, um, signs for approval. However, the conversation pivoted a little bit on whether or not to originally adhere to the three sign limit that is in the approved policy. Or rather to make an exception to the, to the policy and approve all five. So the recommendation coming out of council was to dis- discuss basically that, whether or not to adhere to the policy or to make an exception this year. And then a few other clarifications for you. There was a supplemental, a, a done attachment that was supposed to be attached to the James, James Keyville honorary sign application submitted by Sue Meyer. I sent it out to city council via email this afternoon. If you haven't had a chance to read it, um, if, if you'd like, I could read it for you. Otherwise, I mean, I will tell you, it tells a pretty remarkable story of a, a fairly young McHenry police officer at that time. Also a Vietnam veteran who apprehended an armed murderer. We had a, a fairly long history. It's a pretty fascinating story. And then this particular location, there is a sign at the opposite corner of this location that is being requested. So there is a, a sign for Fred Meyer on the northeast corner and is in the orientation of Pearl Street. I, I do believe we can still put a sign up at this intersection and orient it in the direction of Riverside Drive. Or if that's not suitable, I can also work with, with Sue Meyer to come up with an alternate location. Um, but tha- that brings up a, a little bit of a larger point in that we are starting to get requests for the same locations that are currently approved and are currently up. And, uh, the time limit on these applications is ten years. A lot of these are beyond ten years. And a lot of them are, they're starting to get requested even though the existing signs are ten years old. So that's, that's another dilemma which I don't think we have to discuss in detail tonight. That's not really on the supplement. But, uh, it's, it's something that hasn't brought up by the council members and I think it's something that needs to be addressed at some point.
Thank you, Troy. So I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for discussion by council. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, that's why I, I just feel that, uh, we need to stick with, uh, the three, uh, applications that we've, uh, uh, originally, uh, came up with, uh, you know, um, it's five that right now. I mean, uh, the year isn't up, uh, maybe you have a couple more. Are we not gonna turn anybody down? Uh, are we gonna have a flood? Are we gonna have them, uh, you know, more than one on an intersection? You know, the more you approve, the less, uh, prestigious it is for somebody to have one. If all of a sudden you've got them, you know, flight all over the city. So, and that was why, uh, there was finally, uh, a decision to put a limit on, uh, how, how long those signs can stay up. So I, I'm still in favor of just having three and that's for council to decide on which three.
Yeah, now, then, uh, before we get too much further into that, those discussions, it's, it's worth noting, there are several people representing the applications that are here. And I believe we're hoping to speak on behalf of their applications if they were, if they're allowed to. So do we want to do that? Do you want to do that now?
Yeah, we can go ahead and do that.
So who do we have?
We'll let this start out. Sue Meyer? Yeah, go ahead. You're on mute.
There you go. There you go. Okay, thank you, Mayor Jet. Um, thank you for the opportunity. I, I would just add a couple of thoughts. And first I'd like to say, I believe I was the second one to submit a nomination this year. And if I understa- I do understand, because I was there when we wrote this ordinance, that if you stick to three, it's not, I, I don't think it's right to change from the first three that were submitted. There's five submitted. Um, so I would be disappointed if we didn't follow that part of the ordinance. Um, second, I would just like to add, I did the addendum because it's, it's one of those, uh, uh, moments where all of a sudden you realize everyone you're talking to probably wasn't even born when this happened. And so I, I wanted to clarify more what exactly took place back then. But, um, the other thing I would just like to mention is, um, while I agree with everything you said, Alderman Glad, about the reason we wrote the ordinance and why we, we chose to limit it so that it didn't become a sign on every corner. I, I do agree with that. The only thing I brought up at Public Works that I would reiterate is this is a year of extraordinary circumstances. Uh, I, I hope we never see another year like this one that we just had. Um, one of the gentlemen sadly lost his life this year in a car accident. Um, a- all the circumstances of these five people are unique. And while I do believe in following the rules and having rules, I guess for what everybody has been through this year in particular, I just feel like if we can honor five of our residents who, all five of them truly deserve it and make five families feel so good in a ba- a year that has made most of us feel so bad. Sometimes I think rules need to be stretched. And, um, you don't have to do it, change the ordinance, you could just do it for this year maybe. And that's all I really have to say. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Uh, next. Who else is on here? I'd like to speak.
So we've got, uh, Aaron Smith.
Jerry? Jerry Condon, you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I'd like to say the same. Um, I agree with everything that Sue said. Having been on the council also when we created this ordinance, um, uh, yeah, the reason we put three was valid. And I think it's still valid, but I do think that there are always, um, times where it's appropriate to have exceptions. I, I would not encourage the council to, or, or even support that it become a permanent thing that you, uh, change from three. But if I understood correctly, um, we have not, the co- city has not filled the three spots in the past few years. And I think two out of the five, if I am correct, and Troy, please correct me if I'm wrong, um, came in last year and there wasn't a meeting to discuss those. So they could have actually been awarded last year even and didn't. So, um, do I think that all five, when I heard the stories, um, at the Public Works Committee, um, I was, I was just in awe at how great the, these citizens were and how much they all deserved this, um, honor. And so, um, specifically I had nominated Mike Linderman because he has, his company, um, Pro Plumbing has been so instrumental in stepping forward when we needed sponsors. So many of the banners, whether it be Fiesta Days or Sham Rocks the Fox, that, yeah, it was always pro, all pro plumbing, all pro plumbing. And I, I think that it's so appropriate to recognize him. But, but I, I will, again, in awe of all five, and I think they all deserve it. And I think, as Sue said, this has been an extraordinary year. And I hope the council recognizes how important all five of those people are, uh, have been and are to our community. That's all. Thank you.
So to, to your point, there, real, real quick, uh, the history is that we approved two last year. We, in twenty, and held two ceremonies, one in twenty nineteen, held one ceremony, two in eighteen and one in seventeen. And then you're also correct, there were two, the two first listings came in after our last ceremony at the tail end of, uh, twenty twenty.
Thanks, Troy. All right, uh, who else would like to speak on behalf of this matter?
Doc?
Erin?
Hi.
Erin.
Thank you so much for having me this evening. I am here to represent my mom, um, Judy Walsh Smith. Um, my, and I don't need to go over everything I wrote in the paper and everything we talked about at the Public Works Service. But, um, this is my mom's eightieth birthday. She just turned eighty in March. And I had no idea what to get her for her birthday. And, um, some of you may know that she went ahead and named, um, John Street and Center Street after my grandmother. Um, and I was like, what an amazing gift to give to my mom who is still around and who would very much so appreciate having a street sign named after her. Being, she was community service officer at the McHenry Police Department for, I believe it was fifteen or sixteen years. Um, I, I, Alderman Glad had mentioned last time that how everybody knows my mom. Oh, my gosh, we would go on vacation and we'd be at Mount Rushmore and someone would be like, oh, Judy, how are you? And we would be so embarrassed because everybody talks to my mom. So I, I just personally feel that she is McHenry. There is no one else I can think of. I grew up in this town, um, who, who represents this town and who would do anything in that town if someone called her and asked. She goes to visit Chudins', she brings them banana bread. Um, she's still, um, you know, making great use of her time volunteering, um, at St. Patrick's Church. She volunteers at the fish pantry still. Um, and I, I just, obviously I adore her. So, um, that's why I'm here and working in a school to kind of, kind of reiterate what everybody else has kind of said. Um, this has been an insane year. Um, and I think that things that happened, um, I'm a school counselor, so things that we've had in place and protocol that we've had in schools have been totally different this year and will not be that way next year. So if I could add my two cents for if you could look at maybe all five for just this year being that things have just been so different, I agree, I would not change anything after this year. But I do know, and I was the last one to send in our submission. And I, the, the one thought that comes into my head is if, what if something happened to her this year and she wasn't able to see her sign? So that's just how I kind of, I kind of look at it. So I thank you all for considering her for a sign, a street sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. All right, uh, any others that are on this call, on this Zoom meeting?
So I don't, I don't believe anyone's gonna appear to speak. And then, uh, Brian Alt, so I don't see him here. He was the applicant for Mark Houston.
Okay. All right. So we'll go ahead and, uh, I appreciate all of you speaking on behalf of, uh, street signs. Um, I'll go ahead and open up for, uh, city council discussion again. Alderwoman Miller?
So I, I agree with Sue Meyer and Jerry that we, we shouldn't necessarily change the ordinance because we have an exceptional year. But I, I do think we have discretion that we have five amazing individuals that are outstanding citizens in our community. And if we have the discretion to award five signs, we can. Um, these are five amazing applications. I sat in on the Public Works meeting and listened to their, you know, their applications and their presenters. These are outstanding citizens. If we, if we stay with our three and say to them, bring your applications back, we have to also recognize we have an aging population of amazing citizens and we will experience a backlog. So we, we have to recognize that as well, that if we push two of these people to next year, as Aaron said, they're not getting any younger. What happens next year when we have a couple more aging amazing citizens? And now we have four and we have to pick three. So it, it would be, if, it would be my opinion that if we have the ability to have a little flexibility this year, to not change the ordinance, but to recognize these five outstanding citizens and approve all five of them. Um, I think they're all worthy and it would be very difficult to pick three out of the five.
Thank you, Sue. Any other questions, comments by council? Alderman Santee?
I'm good with all five. You know, one unique, uh, year, uh, we've had twelve, eighteen months. And, uh, enough has been said, uh, these are, all five of these people need to be recognized. And, you know, we, in the worst case scenario, two of them are gonna get recognized next year. And I don't need to, uh, I mean, I, I think for one year, I, I'm comfortable doing this. Um, and, uh, celebrate, uh, what these four people did, uh, wonderful things in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman Devine?
I agree with Alderman Santee and Alderwoman Miller as well. Um, five for this year. All five of these, um, people are deserving of this honor. Thank you.
Alderman Harding?
Yeah, it's, I don't need to talk much about this. Uh, let's do all five. Let's keep five families happy, great citizens. And, um, um, what an awesome honor. Yeah, let's, let's do it. Let's move forward with this.
Thank you. Alderman Mahovic?
I agree as well. Uh, we should do all five this year.
Thank you. And Alderman Schaefer?
I know it's been discussed that we shouldn't change it, but there has not been one person that we've denied this from. So maybe we should change it to a higher number like five. Cause every time this comes up, there's, I know I would have a hard time saying that that person wouldn't qualify. So when you hear, you know, we have five amazing people and it's a different year, we can have five or ten or twenty amazing people every year. So, I mean, I, I know we don't have to do it tonight, but I would suggest that you either consider changing the number or you're gonna run into this every year and then it's gonna have to be someone making a huge, you know, appeal to get it done. But that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, I think I got everyone. Um, so I think we're gonna go ahead and, Alderman Glad, you spoke first, so I thought, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know what? If we're not gonna follow the ordinance, then change it. Simple and easy. We have an ordinance, we should follow it. If we don't want to change it, I mean, if we want it, but don't want to follow it and we, we feel that we should have a higher number, then let's change the ordinance to a higher number. But we should have, we should have a criteria that we stick with and not just be flexible back and forth. Why, why even bother putting in a, a max, uh, and a number if we're not gonna follow what we put in the ordinance? So we should either, either stick to what we put in the ordinance or change the ordinance so that it, 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 uh, reflects, uh, what we really want to do. And maybe, maybe we just don't put a limit, uh, down, you know, that, uh, and maybe we just have it from, from a certain date to a certain date, uh, so many applications, we'll accept any applications up to a certain date. And then the decision should be made, uh, the following. And then the decision should be made the following week or two or whatever the next meeting is. And just go with it. I mean, maybe you want a criteria that you don't have two on the same intersection or something like that, but. Do you want to have ten or you want to have fifteen? Put it in an ordinance that way then. So we should, if if we're going to create an ordinance, then we should stick to it. If, you know. Needless to say, you heard from some of the applicants that have have put in. Sure, they want the the person they're asking for to be approved to, you know, for this this year. So it's okay to do five this year, but they wouldn't feel that we should go with any further. Down the road with five, but if the council feels they want to go with eight, they want to go with ten, I don't care. But let's let's follow whatever kind of ordinance that we create and let's let's go with that. And and again, the number. Maybe there needs to be different criteria than just the number of that we approve every year. But maybe where we approve them or whatever. So that's all I got to say.
So I I I wouldn't be in favor, just me personally, I wouldn't be in favor of doing five every single year. I just think it's. That's a lot. And I think considering the times that we've been through, I think the five for this year is. Is definitely something that we should be doing, but I don't think changing nor nor doing eight or ten. Troy and I would be out at a. Once a month doing street signs, you know, in the winter and everything. So I say, you know, we we. Bend the rules a little bit on this one, you get five and then keep it as is. The ordinance is the same for the following years. Troy, do you agree with that?
I agree. The scheduling is a challenge as you and I well know. But to Alderman's last point, I'd be more than happy to bring the policy in front of committee for. Maybe some refining because like I said. The the age of some of these applications, the 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 real estate at some of people's favorite intersections in pound. Is starting to get gobbled up and that is becoming a dilemma when when some of these applications come.
Thank you Troy. Any other questions, comments by council?
Mayor Jet, this year you're willing to go with five. What if there's two more applicants? Will you go with seven?
No.
Would you go with six? No. So you only go with five because we had five submitted.
Yeah, five submitted. I say all of them are great. I mean, reading them.
Well, there might be two others that might come that are even greater.
What is the deadline? Is there?
What you're saying, right?
The so the policy is fairly loose. It's applications received January first through. December thirty first of the current calendar year will be reviewed. Also, I guess it is a little. So that's my, yeah, my apologies. I I may have, I may have been able to. Control this a little better if I if I had more readily adhered to that because then that would have eliminated. That would have kept us in three actually.
That would have what?
That would have kept this. Bear with me a second.
Mayor, I have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Do all the applicants know when they come into that it's a ten year lifespan? Because I I mean, we've, again, I've brought this up several times. We. We've approved that. That goes back a long time. I think before you Mayor Jet. That it's a ten year span and I know we've got some that have reached that timeframe. So are we allowing that to go longer? And do the applicants know that it's a ten year sign period?
I would assume so Troy.
Uh, that I think people.
Is it on the application?
On the application and it's and the the policies attached every time we put in front of committee or council, but. I I think people just. You know, don't. They don't consider it at the time and it's not really the people that are currently applying that are the concern with the ten year limit. It's the people that have already had a sign in place. For for a certain amount of time. So anyways, back to back to the the count the calendar year that it happens in. So I would say some of this blame can be can be placed on me. We we pushed some things through. Kind of quickly and and bunch some things together, you know, going back to the. The Mark Amor. Application. We there were some stuff that we just kind of put on one at a time just to push them as quickly as we could scheduling considerations and the the recentness of some of. Those tragedies, so. Originally adhering to the policy, there would not be as many in front of you. Tonight.
So there would have been two for last year and then three for this year?
Yep.
Okay. So I think that's a little easier to. In my opinion, but. So I think majority of council is okay to move forward with this to bring it back to council next meeting. Any other? Things we need to try? That's it. And then do you want to bring back to the committee? Maybe looking at changing some of that or making sure that.
Yeah, I think we'll do a policy review later this year at a committee meeting there and there doesn't have to be a huge rush on the committee meeting. And I'll bring ordinances for all five of these back at the the next meeting that is reasonable tomorrow.
Sounds good. And we'll have all new committees anyway to open up some new people coming on, so. All right, thanks Troy. All right, so we'll go ahead and bring that back for a vote next meeting. So thank you, everyone that got on and. All the applications that was turned in. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is executive session. This is really ultimately the purpose of the contract for Derek Moorefield, city administrator. Is there any? One wanting to go into executive session? I figured putting this on the agenda to give that opportunity. If not, we can go ahead and enter an executive session. And at that moment, I would ask that Chief Burke and also Carolyn Lynch stays on the line for financial and obviously operations too with. Chief Burke. So any? Thoughts on that? No executive session? We're good with that? All right, so we'll go ahead and. Move on to number eleven. As a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the city administrator employment agreement between the city of McHenry and William Derrick Moorefield. For the period in May first, twenty twenty one through April twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. I'll go ahead and I just want to say, you know, Derek has been. Excellent on the financial side to support to other staff members, to myself. But you know, I think having him on board for the next four years, I think we have a huge momentum. And I think we need Derek Moorefield on our side to get that done. So I just wanted to say that. Open up for discussion by city council. Alderman Sandy.
I'll agree with you, Mayor. I've worked with Derek since day one. He's definitely showed that he's a very talented and I I like. The organizational skills and I like that. You know, he brings things to the table and. He'll sit down with you and he'll. I I it's me, I I kind of, I try to. Get a little bit of the personality of out of a person and and try to get there. To a certain extent, you know, somewhat of of an opinion, even though. They don't have a vote on. On the council, but yet. They see everything in front of the council. And they see everything behind the council. And what my meaning to that is. There. People in position like Derek, I mean, are seeing everything, all the all the things in motion at the office and. You know, you are a rugged organization of many people, hundreds of people. And you might, you need to make sure that you're, you know, you're covering your bases, but you're letting your people delegate their authority and run their positions. And and that's the way I see the city working and I've seen it in the private sector for a long time. And when I when I see that happening on the on the. On the municipal side, it. Personally, it's a positive to me and. You know, I look forward to. To Derek being with being with us for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you very. Any others? Any other questions? Be careful what you say about them. We're going to have to open up a couple of doors to get them out of those frickin' places. But Alderman Miller, go ahead.
I I just wanted to reiterate what Alderman Sandy said. I think Derek is an asset to the city. As a new alderperson, he's been a significant resource for me to learn from. Always willing to help, always willing to take a phone call. It's been a learning experience for me this last two years, learning city budget alone has been. An undertaking and I'm grateful that he's able to create and explain in great detail. That process because if you understand the money, thank you Carolyn and Derek. If you understand the money, you understand the process. So I appreciate all that the two of you put together and I think Derek's ask for the modifications in his. Employment agreement were reasonable and well negotiated. So that's my only comment. Thank you Derek.
Thank you Sue. All right, any others? No, all right. Perfect. I will go ahead and. Ask for a motion in a second for item eleven. As a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a city, the city administrator employment agreement between the city of McHenry and William Derrick Moorefield. For the period May first, twenty twenty one through April twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. Alderman Miller.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Sandy.
I will second.
Thank you. Discussion on this item? Alderman Sandy.
Yeah, just to bring Derek back down to earth a little bit so he can get out of the office tonight, but. We we've agreed to disagree on things many times, but you know what? We walk away and guess what? We're having discussions the next day on another topic. It happens, happens in business every day and just thank you very much again for being there, but I like that. I don't want. Followers, I want leaders and I appreciate I appreciate him being one of our leaders. Thanks.
All right, this time I'm going to go ahead and ask the clerk. Go ahead and do the roll call.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Congratulations Derek, you're stuck with us for four more years.
I just just thanks everybody. I'm not, I don't take compliments very well, so I appreciate all the kind words that people said. And just know that. You know, I I do give my hundred percent here every day and and it's not about me. It's about the city of McHenry and. City council and the employees here that I work with every day and. You know, I can only look as good as the directors and all the people that work here at, you know, for McHenry and so. All the kind words that you think or say about me is really a reflection also on the directors and. And every single employee here at the city of McHenry because if it wasn't for their hard work. You know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't look good either. So thank you, everybody for your words again and for all the directors on the line. Thank you very much also. And council again, thanks for the trust and input and especially over the last difficult year that we've had. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, staff reports. Transmit a staff report for two, April nineteenth, two thousand twenty one. Who's that?
Yeah, but again, it's a pretty long report that went in again this month and I I added to it. Or added to this one, the director's contact information. I think everybody knows how to get a hold of them anyway, but. If you have any questions on any of the items that's included in the report that will be included in these council packets, feel free to reach out to. To either myself or the directors directly for any questions that you might have on any of those items.
Anyone have any questions regarding? Staff report? All right. Mayor's report. Few things, I know Christine and Keith and Sam are still on here. I'd ask that you guys would meet with me in person at city hall at your convenience. I think we can iron out a lot of the the concerns or questions or reading into things that maybe I don't mean that. You know, that way. I I'm always open. I've, you know, getting into a public setting with. Thirty forty people yelling at me about everything under the sun is not something I'm interested in, but. I say we sit down first and then we can kind of go from there and have a civil conversation. Which I'm always willing to do, so. Keith, I know you've been a kind of. I don't want to say ringleader on this, but if you can go ahead and get Christine and Sam or just Christine, whoever, you know, to have a meeting at city hall. And I'd be more than happy to meet with you guys there.
So the the four of us, Mayor?
That's fine, yeah. Would you be okay with that?
I'm fine with that and I would greatly appreciate that. You have questions or you would just like to have them answered?
Yeah, that's fine. And and I'll have a staff member in there with me. So if there's some questions that I can't answer, we'll, you know. And then Clay check, what's her name? Caitlin?
Yeah.
If you want to bring her as well, I know she wanted to meet in person and I was waiting for a response. So if you want to just ask her to that way we can. All meet and everyone's on the same page, getting the same information versus information getting. Out differently, so.
No, thank you. We definitely appreciate it.
All right, and then also I want to thank Jeff Schaefer and also Chad Mahavik for serving on the city council. You guys have been a pleasure to work with, you know, from all levels of what we've done over the last four years. Has been amazing, but Jeff, obviously we'll see you around town and Chad, you too. Congratulations on the school board. You know, from one to the next, I don't know which one's better, but good luck and you know, if you if you need anything from us, let us know. Also, we got some new members, Frank McClatchy in. What word is that? Mine just went, what word is that? Three, word three, sorry. So word three, Frank McClatchy was elected in that position. So congratulations, Frank. Look forward to working with you here at the city council. Also, Sean Strack was elected. As well, Sean Strack is obviously someone in the community that is well known as a realtor. But I think Sean will bring a lot of new fresh ideas as well as the real estate side of things, which is always nice to have, which we also have with. Ryan Harding and also Sue Miller, which is always good, especially if we're looking for development and growth in our community as a whole. Also, Vic Santi, congratulations. Three hundred and seven write-ins, crazy numbers, but congratulations, you worked your tail off for that and. Well deserved, so congratulations. Other than that, I think that was everybody. Once again, Jeff, Chad, thank you again. Other than that, that's all I got. City council comments. Alderman Sandy.
Hey, I've I've got a ask Troy. Troy. Did did you want, do we have a date or or you're just going to propose a a public works meeting? Possibly sometime in May? Turn your mic on.
That was the best of them. Yeah, once once committees are set, I would like to hold a public work committee in May. To run our road program, twenty twenty two. Location selection meeting pretty much as early as we coordinate on a public works committee. So maybe a few other items on it.
Thank you.
All right, and I, sorry, Ryan, your your term was only two years, so I forgot about you. Congratulations, Ryan Harding, on two years of being elected by the people of city McHenry versus appointed. So that's a big, big deal, so. And also Christine Bassy that ran against Ryan. Thank you for trying to serve on the city council and where he's welcome. You know, new people to get on council and congratulations, Ryan. All right, now moving on to city council comments. Any other city council comments?
I just wanted to take a moment to thank Derek as well. I know I don't normally, I'm not really supposed to say too much, but. I just want to say thank you to Derek because he kind of took me under his wing when I started as the city clerk. And he helped me as well to be a leader, so I just want to thank you for that and congratulations to you. And he helped me as well to be a leader. So I just want to thank you for that and congratulations to you.
I need to write notes before a meeting. Tricia, congratulations.
Thanks, Wayne. I appreciate.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, don't put that on the minutes. Um, you can keep that one off, but yeah, it's congratulations, Tricia. Um, you know, I know at first when we were talking, you were like, I don't even know what to do. You fit in perfectly and I'm so glad that you were elected in this position. So thank you for all you've done and, uh, you've done a heck of a job. So thank you.
Thanks for your support.
All right. Any other city council comments? I don't think I forgot anyone else. Go ahead, Alderman Santi.
Oh, there's one other person here that's been here all night. Brandy Quans?
Yep.
Uh, thank you for attending. You're definitely, uh, at least you're not wearing the, the, the Macardo goofy headsets tonight. Thank you very much for that. So, but it's nice to have you here and what, we didn't really need you too much.
Uh, Brandy's awesome. All right. Well, thank, oh, Alderman Miller, go ahead.
Hey, I just have two comments. Um, last couple of weeks, I've just had a, an opportunity to interact with staff a lot more than normal. And I just want to thank them again for being as super responsive as they are. You know, it's just amazing when you can pick up the phone and call a staff person and just get an answer right away or get a response. So Troy, Doug, Bill, you know, everybody, Ross, thank you very much for just being available, picking up the phone. I know you do it for everybody, not just me. And it's just amazing to know that you do what you do and you do it so well. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And of course, congratulations, Wayne, another four years. Woo-hoo. Thanks for taking it each, yay. Thanks for taking it each and every day. Um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other city council comments? Looking for a motion in a second to adjourn. Alderman Santi.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Alderman Harding.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Mayor Jet?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
All right, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.